Let's go ahead and call the meeting to order at 7:02 PM. A motion to approve the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
All those, is Scott online? Nope, okay. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes. Agenda approved. I guess we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. So we're gonna move on to presentations, proclamations from visitors. Do we have any visitors? Not yet. Okay, and no visitors online. Okay, so then we're gonna swear in our new counselor. Douglas Cox.
We need to.
I think we can just turn. Here, so if you want to.
Oh yeah, Doug, go ahead and come over here. I'll try to. And then afterwards, you can go ahead and say them. Go ahead and raise your right hand.
And then you're gonna keep after me.
I, Doug Cox.
I, Doug Cox.
Douglas Cox, excuse me.
I, Douglas Cox.
Do solemnly affirm.
Sow me affirm.
That I will support the constitutions and laws of the United States of America.
That I will support.
That I will, I, that I will support the constitutions and laws of the United States of America.
I will support the constitution and law of the United States of America.
The constitutions and laws of the state of Oregon.
Constitution and law of the state of Oregon.
The charter and ordinances of the city of Omso.
Charter and ordinance, city of Omso.
And that I will, and well faithfully.
I will faithfully.
Destroy the duties of city council.
Destroy the duties of city council.
In this city, or in and for the city of Omso.
And for the city of Omso.
According to the law of the best of my.
You're sitting there.
I'm done.
Like, that's it, I'm out. It's too much. Alright. Yeah. Well, welcome. Um, so next we move on to the consent agenda.
I moved to approve the consent agendas presented.
Seconded.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Is that, agenda passes. So then we have public hearing, no, no public hearing tonight. Uh, no old business.
No public comment.
Oh, no, public comment, sorry. Um.
We do have public comment.
We do, okay.
So Ted Shepherd is here from the Historical Society, and they also operate our local museum. Um, and uh, he reports yearly on the progress and operations of the museum. He didn't get it on the agenda, so we're just putting him in the public area. Typically, it would be at her presentation.
Okay.
Hello, everyone. Uh, Ron said, President, my name's Ted Shepherd, president of the Historical Society for quite a few years. We had a pretty good year this year, at least we were able to open in April. Twenty twenty-one, we didn't open up till June, and we were actually able to resume our meetings in April of 2022. And during those closing periods, our officers and board members maintained the business speeds of the museum and, and the Omso Historical Society. And we held elections in November of last year for our 2023 officers and one board position through 2025. Stated that we resumed our first Saturday in April, and on that first Saturday, by making certain announcements and so forth, we did have sixteen visitors on the opening day, which was nice to have and see. People came out to start getting past COVID, I guess. Uh, thanks to a donation in January of last year, we were able to purchase new blinds for the museum, a lighted open sign, some display case lighting, informational rack and cards, and display poster cards. The informational racks, I did hand out one to each desk and to the audience and employees. Uh, we have those at the Figaro's. City Hall and the travel. You come up with the right word, visitor center and stadium, that's what I'm looking for, yeah. And uh, also with the addition of some new acquisitions. Pictures of the high school graduates that were in here from Omso High School, a new big display case and, and a new bookcase. And a large, as you see, Oregon Trail uh, map that was actually commissioned in nineteen forty-three by the Oregon Trail Commission. And a lot of people love that, the kids love looking at it, because it's got all the trails from Missouri to Oregon. And on up to Washington and down into California, so it's hands-on, it's got glass and it's very huge. And so as a result of all those new additions, we did make some new arrangements, it was nice to kind of change a few things around and maybe bring a few other things out. And uh, so that all was nice to kind of do that, and we worked on it in the winter. And also the addition of some more poster boards, because poster boards are two-sided, we had fifteen, now we have thirty, so that's, you know, thirty more items that come out of the drawers that people can actually see. Because you just move them back and forth as you want to look at the different, we have documents, we have newspaper copies, we have merchant calendars from town. So a lot of nice different things for people to look at. We, we were open for a hundred and nine hours, we had a hundred and ninety-two visitors, and our volunteers donated two hundred and eighty-three hours, and our current membership correction is now fifty-one, we had five new renewals on our Thursday night meeting. Our twenty twenty-two expenses, forty-six hundred and sixteen dollars, income thirteen thousand three hundred and forty-two, with a bank balance of twenty-three six forty-eight. Yeah, it's still fun to do, I have done it a lot of years, I like history, I like sharing information on the town. I was just telling Ron, we received two pictures this week. Uh, they went to Carleen, she called me, we started doing the detective work on them, and they turned out to be from the corner of the old Omso High School where the playground stuff sat on the corner of Main and Main. The teeter totters were parallel to Main Street. And a couple, and one old home that's not there now, because the telephone facility is sitting on that lot, but I think I've come up with a name, and we know about what year, and talked to a couple of people, so it's fun when we get those photographs and we try to figure out the layout. And uh, and the names of the family members are on there, so we get a lot of things like that, we continue to operate by appointment when it's necessary, and we have our website that gives us contacts. And we send information back to them, and sometimes they send donations, so it's all nice. Any questions? I don't know if I have much more, I know this is in front of you, but. Other than that, that's it.
I don't have any questions.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Appreciate the council's support and the Corn Festival's support, and we thought we helped out with about eight or nine members at the corn shopping, and then bagging, I guess, corn bagging for the Corn Festival, and people had fun, so it's on our calendar, I'm gonna keep in mind.
Thank you.
Yeah, he hit me up like Thursday or Wednesday, and I said, well, I think you could do Friday, that worked out, make calls, and we've got eight members to show up and bag a lot of corn. I was only half the pile or less. Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you, Ted.
So Mayor, if I could just have a moment to address some of the museum's work, I would say that the museum that we have here in the community, for a community our size, is actually pretty impressive. Uh, with the amount of art, artifacts, now Ted's walking out because he didn't want me to praise him, but he and, he, he and Carol were just honored by the Daughters of the American Revolution. Um, and it's, I think their second highest national award for the work that they've done in our community for the museum work, and so I attended that last week, and uh, they just, they're really dedicated, our, our folks at the society, and, and they do a lot of work on our behalf, so. Ted zipped out of here, but I would like to say that. I'll ma, I'll make sure we, we, we praise them a little bit more.
Yeah.
Where were we? For to-do business. Business, okay, new business, Ron. We have Information of the State of the City presented by our city administrator, Ron Harding. I drank coffee before I came, just to prepare.
Counsel, I'm gonna go ahead and turn the little podium a bit here, just so, I'd like to be able to pivot, maybe would be the best, we're not really set up too well for this, but I can see the screen really well. So as you know, it's a tradition for us, I think, uh, this preceded me, we used to always do a State of the City in Omsville. Uh, and usually it was just published in the paper with some bullets, I think, uh, just the things that occurred throughout the year, but uh, since my arrival, I've made it a tradition to do a yearly report back to the council and the community on our accomplishments, our challenges. Uh, and it's just a good communication tool so that we can kind of celebrate at least at one moment in time, because we don't often celebrate our victories, but tonight is a time for us to celebrate, uh, some of those accomplishments. Uh, and it's also to focus on those challenges. And to continue to keep the dialogue going in the community, uh, what those challenges are and, and making the community aware of it, so they're not surprised by it, hopefully, uh, when we get to whatever that challenge might be, and, and we're trying to address that. So before I get started, I just want to again thank my staff, uh, Kirsty and Haley for their help with putting the State of the City together. Um, as I said before today, I, I don't, I don't want to say this, uh, in the wrong light, but my job gets easier. Uh, each day as these two jump in and really take over a lot of things and help me move projects forward, and so I, I have really, really enjoyed the addition of, um, not the positions, the positions have always been there, but just uh, a, a couple of very proactive members, so I just wanted to call them out. State of the City, okay, so we're gonna kind of just move right into it, I, I did make a promise that I wasn't gonna drag this out to a two or three hour presentation, I'm gonna try to condense it to an hour, hour and a half, if I can. Uh, goal number one, so as council knows, council has five overriding goals that they've approved several years ago, and we work from those goals, and then within those goals are few objectives. Uh, specific tasks that we're gonna accomplish, but really, we're focused in looking for opportunities to enhance and build those goals forward as time goes on. So our first goal is to provide uh, and maintain municipal facilities and infrastructure to support the current operations and for future growth. And so some of the work that we've been doing this year, uh, really a lot of it centered around our water and our wastewater system. Um, we had a pretty major repair in our sewer system, this year we had to repair the sewer screen. Uh, that, that's a, a piece of equipment that, um, eliminates foreign matter that happens to get into the sewer system. Uh, DEQ, we did get our plan, our facility plan approved through DEQ, uh, DEQ, that was a milestone that we had to meet as part of our um, uh, enforcement action, uh, we have a particular schedule to meet, and we are ahead of that schedule. So staff is being very deliberate about making sure that we're staying ahead of that, uh, that, uh, implementation schedule that DEQ has outlined. Um, we had a booster pump for the water system replaced, um, where we replaced, it says six to ten residential meters, uh, each month, so I talked to Steve today, we actually replaced about a hundred meters a year. Because what happens is, is our meters are aging, and um, I wanted to highlight that because I wanted council to be aware that we do have some initiatives that we're gonna bring forward at the retreat. And some of it is really centered around, is this the best value for us? Replacing an old outdated meter with just a new version of the same meter. Or really, do we want to start looking at the future and, and look at ways that we might provide better customer service? Um, as we change that system out, so there's a lot, there's a lot of newer systems out there that we're not utilizing. It, it, it requires a larger investment upfront. Um, but it's one of those things that I think is really, i- it's actually been more beneficial in the short term than the long-term cost, so we'll talk about that at the retreat, that's on our agenda. Uh, our Porter Boone well, so we were able to get the, uh, as you know, we awarded contract to get the engineering done and all the analysis done for that, uh, that process has been fast-tracked through Oregon Health Authority to make sure that, um, uh, we could drill the well in that's, in those locations without affecting your neighboring wells. And we have, uh, some preliminary approvals, but we don't have anything in writing yet, that's what we're waiting on for that project, so uh, you know, typically those projects take years to get permitted. Um, and uh, with the help of some of the departments and, uh, some of our, um, counterparts in state government, we've been able to kind of fast-track some of this because of how much needed it is for the community. Um, our wastewater system, uh, project, wetland delineation, that was completed. Uh, we've been trying to meet all the requirements under USDA to be able to qualify for their loan program, uh, that has the most favorable terms for the city. Uh, part of that was doing a wetland delineation on our site, and we were able to get our subcontractors to kind of fast-track that work. And they've been coordinating with the agency, and they've been working really well together, and that's been a benefit uh, to the city, uh, they tell us what we need, and we go out and try to deliver it, so we can make sure that we're staying ahead of, uh, any funding requests. One of the things that's really important when we go out and look for funding, whether it's state funding, grants, or what have you, is they look for projects that are ready to go, they don't want to fund something that's gonna occur into the, you know, future. They want, you know, how prepared are you to take this money and do something with it? So, yep, so we're, so we're trying to do that. Uh, we did finalize our FEMA reimbursements from the ice storm of twenty twenty-one. Uh, originally that was like sixty-five thousand dollars, we actually got a little bit more because FEMA came back and provided a little higher uh, reimbursement than before, so that worked out great. We'll take it, uh, and then working on our new public works facility, that's uh, that's, we were able to get a grant for nine hundred thousand dollars, remember, it was just a couple of years ago, I was coming to council saying, we really gotta have this facility. I don't really know how to pay for it, but you know, even if we had to do a loan, it's something we gotta do, and council said, do what you gotta do. You know, we gotta get this facility, and we were able to get a grant, we have some money saved, so that project is out the bid, uh, all the bid specs are out. We're working with subcontractors and contractors right now, and um, I don't know if it'll be the next meeting, I can't remember when the bid ends, but in the, in the near future, we're gonna come forward with a bid award uh, for that, so that'd be great. Uh, Delmar extension, uh, design is complete, and council authorized that a couple of years ago, and that was designing the roadway. Uh, to be able to do that Delmar extension. Now, there's a couple of barriers to that project, one is there's a building, uh, that's right in the middle of the right-of-way. Um, and what we've done is we've designed how the road should be built. But we do have some alternative designs, so if we get, we get to a point where it's just not a workable situation, we still have a path forward. Um, so we're doing that. And then our park master plan update, so that's the, uh, that's the Bishop Road Park project, and we've been, uh, we got a grant to do part of that work, and so our subconsultants have been working with public meetings and surveys in the community, and we've been, our staff has been working, uh, with them to, to get all that information out and to take that feedback and incorporate that into a plan, so I think uh, it's not gonna be too far, uh, too much in the near future that we'll be taking that probably to you for approval, it'll go in front of the planning commission and then it'll come to council, but, um, it'll be this year, it certainly will be this year. So that's it for goal one, and, um, you know, we've just, we've done a lot, a lot of it is preparation work for bigger capital projects. Right, that has to be done. So there we go. So, uh, one of the big positives that came out of this year with our wastewater, uh, uh, project is we were able to get one point two five million dollars in the federal omnibus bill uh, that was passed, uh, just before the end of the year. And that was money that we'd been working with our, uh, federal delegation for all year, we've done some tours with staff members. Uh, and I think it was, I think that tour was, was really what pushed us over the edge, honestly, I think they came out saw, you know, physically our constraints, and they went back and said, we gotta figure out how to get some money uh, working in that direction, so that was great. So this is what our funding looks like right now, we're at about four point three million dollars of a roughly twenty-eight million dollar project. Um, and I remember, we started this off just a few years ago, we thought the number was twelve. And then, then the number went to fifteen, and then it was nineteen, and you know, it just keeps growing. The further the project gets pushed out, the more it costs. Um, we did put in a capital request, uh, this year, and we've been working with our elected officials, and we've been working with um, our representatives at the state level. Uh, uh, to see how or where that funding request might fit in, this is the long session, so this is the year typically we, you know, we would see some capital, uh, requests funded. Uh, and so we're just gonna keep working in that, we're gonna keep working in that pattern. So that wastewater system is also really our greatest challenge, and it's not that it's, it's, uh, it, it, it's, it's more of a challenge than other projects, it's just the timing of it has been thrust to the forefront, uh, by DEQ and and, um, other regulatory EPA, regulatory agencies that we're dealing with, so, um, as council knows, uh, we've been working a number of years on this, we've had some success, but this is a huge challenge for us. And part of the challenge is, um, even though we're looking for all these little pockets of money, and we're looking for these different agencies for assistance. Uh, you know, it's a big project, and right now we've got a twenty-four million dollar funding gap, and there's just not, there's just not that kind of funding available through agencies, we discussed DEQ or, um, uh, USDA, having our USDA application in, uh, USDA's budget isn't twenty-eight million dollars, uh, you know, yeah, so they, they, they can't, even if we do qualify for large forgiveness loans and things like that, they can only take on so much of the project. And we've talked to them about, well, what's the city's, you know, what could the city take on, and they actually do their own little analysis of where that affordability rate is for the city. And honestly, we're kind of there now as far as they're concerned, you know, you start getting bumped over a hundred dollars or so, um, that's kind of where they view our affordability range. Um, so, you know, if we did, if we were able to fund a project, and I'm not saying that we could, meaning somebody would give us the money. Uh, but if we were able to fund it, you know, we could see liability bills that are in the two hundred and fifty plus dollar range, and that would really push us outside of that affordability range, and, um, so it would be, the risk of not being able to pay the loans would increase dramatically. Uh, because it's strictly tied to ratepayers, right? And so they have to be able to pay those bills. So, um, it's, it's a huge issue, we really have to get some funding. Uh, that, that's, there's really no two ways about it. We'll end up funding some of this ourselves through the community, there's no question about that, but, um, we really have to get some stopgap funding to lower that cost as much as possible. Um, we kind of have to do it. I, it's my feeling that if we were not able to acquire enough funding to make the project go, DEQ would extend our, um, our enforcement agreement, they would extend that timeline, but the difficulty with that is it's only gonna get more expensive. So it's really not in our best interest to get it extended, it's, it's really in our best interest to move it forward quicker. Because that is ultimately the lowest cost, so that's what we're trying to do. Um, uh, but again, at the same time, we want it to be sustainable. So, uh, and we're trying to lower the burden as much as possible on residents. One of the other big issues that we have is inflow and infiltration, INI, we talk about it all the time, and it's just indicative of the Pacific Northwest, it's, there's not, we have high groundwater in the Pacific Northwest, and because of that, we have these high INI flow rates. And, um, you know, it's gonna be difficult to operate a mechanical plant um, during those high events, like today was a pretty high-flow event, we had massive rain coming down in a short period of time, and um, what, that happens over a few days, that's when you really get a buildup of INI, so. Drinking water successes, um, yeah, this is a great project for the city, we were able to secure, uh, uh, about three and a half billion dollars, a little over three and a half billion dollars in funding uh, for this project in the last few years. This is a project that would have been, as a matter of fact, the city actually had, I believe they had this project, um, they were gonna go out and do a loan for this years ago, and we decided not to pull the trigger on that loan. Um, because again, it was about how much is this gonna increase utility rates, and we're trying to be real sensitive to the community. And, um, and so we didn't do that, but now it's the, it's actually been funded through grants. Now, I talk about all these grant successes, and we've been fortunate because there's been a lot of ARPA money around. Uh, typically, uh, you cannot wait for grants to do these infrastructure projects, because we don't see them as frequently as we've seen them, and in, in the quantities that we've seen them the last few years. And if you go to any, you know, seminar, anything with, uh, utility infrastructure experts, they will say, grants are not the answer to your problem. Because they're just too few in part between. But we've had successes, and we've taken advantage of those successes. Um, but they, they won't always materialize for us in the future. Uh, and so, uh, this project is, uh, the, uh, wells are out, the design is put together for the wells, the uh, consulting analysis for the aquifer has been done. And so, uh, this is actually getting ready to go out to bed. Uh, and what will, what will be the first part of the bed will be drilling the wells. Uh, and then while that's happening, uh, will, our engineer will continue to design the reservoir, and they'll continue to design the, what the infrastructure looks like that'll pump out of the wells, we've got to hit water first. Now, remember, we're funding, uh, one or two wells, it really depends, because there's no magic piece of equipment that says, if you drill a, a well right here, you're gonna hit water and you're gonna get X number of gallons a minute. Uh, and so you, you kind of do this little analysis based on area wells that are already drilled, and you think that you're gonna be successful. And you drill a hole, and hopefully it materializes the way that you think it'll materialize. It'll materialize, but there's been plenty of wells that were drilled and there's no water. And that's just part of the risk that we take on when we do these projects. So. It's funded for one or two wells. If we drilled the first well and hit a great quantity of water, we might not drill a second one. Uh we might not need to do that. Uh and then ultimately, the reservoir will kind of mirror the reservoir that we have in town right now, the ground level reservoir, that's the big blue tank. Over by First and Milk Creek. Except, our hope is uh to change them, to make them look. Uh like something that might be part of the community. This was just an example that staff put together. Um we want people to see them and we don't want them to see a big blue tank. We want them to see something that fits within. Um our community and it could have artwork on it, we haven't decided yet, but I actually like that. Yeah. Um. So we've had a lot of success with with our drinking water and and you know, our. Our testing comes back really well with those waters. We did do a emergency generation project at that million gallon reservoir. Up until we did that project, if we lost power. Um the only water that we could draw from was the elevated tank because of gravity. Uh and uh you know, we might have enough water depending on how long the power was out. But now that we have that generator in place, we can sustain the community. Uh over time, so. If we lose, if we were to lose power. Uh and it was particularly concerning if we were to happen to have a fire at the same time, we had a power outage. You know, those, those are the things that you worry. It's like all these things would converge at once to. To uh just make a bad situation worse. We have been reducing, we've been working on water loss in the city. Council's heard me talk about this as a challenge. Because we have as much as thirty uh plus percent water loss in the city and. Uh it's been a challenge and we think we've got that down much lower than that. We think it might be somewhere between ten and fifteen percent. Um and we're gonna continue to work on that. Uh so we've been working on that. Uh aspect as well. So a lot of good successes there. Uh we just had a meeting with our business organ last week. To talk about this project and everything looked great and they said, yeah, you can move forward and get that out. So a couple of challenges that we have, one is new water rights. So we're in what's called a closed basin. And uh in a closed basin, the state does not issue new water rights. And what a water right is, isn't finding water. A water right is the legal right to pump that water. And so, you know, people may uh remember that if they lived in the country and they just drilled a well. They didn't have to worry about that because those are exempt. Wells, but for any type of commodity. To take water and provide it to the community, we have to have a a water right associated with it. And so if they're not issuing any new water rights, the only avenue for us to get water rights would be to find somebody who has some. In our basin, purchase those and then transfer them to our bank or. Wells, basically. And it's really a documentation transfer is what you're talking about. So you're able to pump more from your wells. Instead of pumping it from wherever they originated from. That can be quite expensive and there's not very many water rights available in our basin. It's very limited. Neighboring basins have a lot more. Farms and things that they can buy out. We just don't have that many, so that's a huge challenge for us. Um twenty percent of the city's water lines are still asbestos cement. We call them AC water lines. And basically they're a non-pressurized concrete tube. Uh but as anybody that is familiar with concrete. Um knows, water seeps through concrete, right? And so that's part of where some of our water loss is going, so we're not gonna fully get water loss under control. Until we start replacing some of that line. When you think twenty percent of the city, um it's a lot, it's probably ten million dollars worth of. Water lines to replace throughout the city, so it's, you know, it's not a small number. Um. It's not unusual. A lot of cities have a percentage of their city that are AC water lines. Uh but again, it's a challenge for us that we wanna, we wanna try to work with. And then sustainable budgeting through hyperinflation. So typically, we raise our water rates about three percent a year, our water and sewer rates. But everything has went into hyperinflation and last year we left it at three percent. Even though the current rate of inflation was more like eleven percent. And we did that to provide relief to the community, but it's not sustainable. And so we're gonna, we're gonna be looking at larger increases this year because our hope was. That hyperinflation would would be short-lived. And and we could, we could buy ourselves out of it for a year or two, but. We're in our second year now and things are not getting cheaper, they're getting more expensive. And so we just can't sustain that. And communicating to the community why we need those things, you know, those are all challenges. Uh. Supporting and encour- encouraging community involvement, creating a sense of community and enhanced livability. Uh this has been one of our biggest successes, uh because we've added a number of community-wide events. And uh and all around the theme of bringing families together. In one central gathering place. Uh and 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 experiencing, you know, good quality time. And uh and I think we've done that with a lot of our community events. So uh some of our community events were uh were existing, we've always done an Easter egg hunt. Um. But uh Super Hill Carnival's great event, very successful in the community. Some uh the city took kind of over the planning and implementation of Corn Festival and we've had great response from the community on that. Uh Christmas in the park and a lot of our Christmas things centered around that Christmas season. Letters to Santa, the Santa visits. Um holiday light decoration, uh just a lot of very positive feedback. Um with that, our service group, the Exchange Club, they've done a number of events. They did the Christmas store. This year, very well received. I think it more than doubled uh from last year. And the amount of people that came and participated and attended. Um and then we really uh enhanced our community outreach again. Uh. Having, having staff that have been proactive, we've done a lot of great stuff with community outreach, so that's been great. Uh and then creating stakeholders, you know, one of the ways we restructured Corn Festival was to get those. Service groups to come and participate and help staff it. And provide volunteers and then redistribute funds, so it's basically becomes a fundraiser for all these various groups. Uh and it serves our purpose. And and it supports all of these groups that then turn around and they can use those resources. To provide services throughout the community during the year. So I think our model's a really good model that we've landed on. And you know, just some fun pictures, uh. If you've been to these events and I think almost every one of you have. Uh you could see just the enjoyment the kids get uh participating. Either with the characters or just during the event, you know, it it's fun. Uh our Tree City project, so we have a sister city with this, with, which is Jervis. And we swap a tree, we, they give us a tree to plant in our community. We give them a tree to plant in their community every year and um. And so that that strengthens our relationship with our sister cities. Uh our dog park, um you know, that was a project we kind of threw together uh. Just based on feedback from the community. Um uh I think, I think it's working out great. Uh we had about eighteen thousand dollars in profits two years in a row from the Corn Festival. Uh hundred and thirty volunteers, uh I think they put in. Can't remember, but I want to say it was five or eight hundred hours. It it was a lot, it was a lot and uh. And so you know, that's a big event. Now, we, we had a hundred and thirty volunteers that signed in. We had people that just came and started helping. They weren't on a. They didn't sign in, they just showed up and it would help for a few hours and leave. Um and so, you know, we, quite a few folks volunteering. Uh I think that event is about, it really two hundred people would make it a very comfortable, two hundred volunteers. Would make it a very comfortable event, so we're still building that uh. And uh and then um you know, all of our activities for Corn Festivals, anything from the Fireman's Breakfast, the Parade. Uh corn sales, um party in the park. Uh even though they're kind of too separate, it's all about Corn Festival Week, uh the skate competition. Um all of that is just part of our celebration for Corn Festival, citywide garage sale. There we had that. So just very good event. Uh new event we did this year was the Pumpkin Walk. We wanted to do something in the fall. And uh people really enjoyed it, you know. And keep in mind, a lot of these events that we have been hosting are not, we, it's not, it doesn't cost the city a great amount of money. To do these, I think, you know, the the pumpkin event was a few hundred dollars. Uh other, other than the staff time, which we typically flex our time for a lot of these events. Um so they're, they're not real high impact events, uh even superhero carnival, the way we've structured it. Um it's a pretty low-cost event for the community, so we get a good value out of that. Um you know, and a lot of it is paid for by businesses that put a booth. Up and they, we, they wouldn't charge for a booth. But they bring a booth and and supply the toys and then they volunteer to staff it, so. It's pretty low cost. Uh there's our Christmas event. Uh Christmas in the park, that's always a fun time. I know you guys, a lot of you guys were there and had a good time. There's. Mayor there with the Grinch. Um. Well, it was, it was cold, it's always cold, so it was a cold night. Uh but that's always a great, you know, when we do these events and I, we don't really keep track of attendees, but I'm guessing. It was hundreds and hundreds of people at Christmas in the park and uh the park is full. Uh everybody's into the holiday spirit and it really meets the intent of putting together these family. Friendly events. Everybody's coming with their families, they're enjoying that quality time and it just strengthens the community. So one of the things we've really been working on is different community outreach and communication channels and um. You know, we come up with some creative stuff when we've got a chance to be creative and. Uh you're gonna see more about communication channels, but I just wanted to kind of show. Now, I'm not really sure how I get this to play, do I just press forward? So go ahead and start the first video. This is a video we put together for Christmas. Okay, that might not play very well. Try the second video. I'll see if it'll work. Is it because it's going back through the sound system? Okay. Okay. So basically, what I'll do is I'll describe the first video. So we, as you know. The la- last several years, we have been using the Grinch. As a symbol to um. Kind of promote Christmas in the park and get people jazzed up about Christmas in the park. And Kirsty put together these promotional videos. Where we wrote a script where the Grinch was seen around town causing chaos. And we partnered with a few businesses in town, so I think we did what, five roughly? Of these videos and we partnered with businesses around town. And uh the Grinch was in that business causing havoc. He stole holiday pie or he was seen, you know, taking Christmas lights out of the hardware store. Uh things like that, the typical stuff that the Grinch would do. And we use that as a way to promote Christmas in the park and it was just a fun way. We got great feedback from the community on on the videos. They really enjoyed it and the kids enjoyed watching them. Uh you know, the kids would tell their mom, you know, can you play the Grinch video? And we'd get feedback from parents. Um what's the Grinch doing? What did the Grinch do today? You know. Uh type thing and we did that leading up to our event and. Prior to these videos, we would do things like uh photos of the Grinch around town. But really, this added a new dynamic to it. And then after Christmas in the park, we had such good feedback with that. We started, we decided to put together a video that was kind of like our own news channel. And it would promote city uh meetings. And. Am I playing that? Okay, uh. And and so uh Kirsty is our resident reporter and uh she does a great job. And basically she promoted this video throughout the community for tonight's meeting. And we plan to continue this. I I can see that we got lots of folks in the audience. Uh but uh but we'll continue to do these videos and I think they're just very well received and we get great shares and and great. Feedback from folks. From that, so I'm gonna try to get by this slide, Kirsty. If you get a chance to go onto our web channel and look at them, it's there, it's really good. Um and so just to talk a little bit about communications, in in the cities, if you look at the cities pages. Our social media posts that are on the city sites. Uh we've had great feedback and if you look at. The difference between our interactions, meaning how many people are clicking on our pages, how many people are liking our pages. Um it's increased dramatically. Where we really get a lot of feedback, uh both boost to our feedback. Is when we go out to community pages and post. And so um you know, we could get, this one here had twenty one shares. Uh and forty one comments, that was an earlier grab, I think some of them had quite a few more than that. Um. But if you look at our, these are numbers, the stats that come right from our our pages. We had a six hundred and twenty seven percent increase in paid impressions over the previous year. Uh six hundred and eighty eight percent increase in reaches. Um and eighty two percent increase in comments, people interacting with our page. Uh and taking time to do that. Um our page visits are up almost a hundred percent. And so these are, these are on city pages. Now, that number just gets blown out of the water when you translate that to like the connections community page. What we do is we post these on our city channels. And then we um repost those on the community con- connection channels or Humble Turner channels. Uh we can't track those because they're not our pages. But as an example, you saw twenty one shares on that one. Um. Uh we have some that are fifty, sixty shares. I mean, that is a lot of shares for city government host. Fifty, sixty shares is just a lot. Uh typically, you'd get a couple. And we've got pages that are on there that we post that we put on those pages. That'll have four and five hundred likes and. You know, sixty, seventy comments, uh and those, that's huge for a city like ours. Really is, uh. I I just don't wanna kind of. Under emphasize how important that is. And here's some of the posts that we got, very positive responses. This year, we really focused on communication with the community. Uh beautiful town, blessed to call it home. Uh one of my favorite is uh. I think we have moved to a magical town. Three, four in the summer, a few pumpkins in the fall, it's like a corner. I mean, those are the kind of responses that you see and you just feel. You know. Uh and we, we could have, we could have just done slide after slide after slide of screenshots of these types of comments. I just wanted to give you an example. Um our statues, uh I think we got. That one was one where we got like fifty or sixty shares and. This is an earlier grab, but if if you go and you look at that on the connections, I think it's up to like almost five hundred or six hundred. Um likes and posts, that's, that's, that's crazy number for. Um, likes and posts, that's, that's, that's crazy number for. You know, we just haven't seen those numbers here. It's just really good interaction. Um. And then uh, we did have a lot of participation with our community uh, park plan, uh, so that project is going really well and honestly, um. I turned that over to staff and, and consultants and they've just run with it and this is a beautiful conceptual. Uh, outline that they've done for that park and there's a lot of amenities there. Um, you know, that's gonna be a great asset for the community and if, if we're able to realize this plan, it's just gonna be wonderful. Uh, place for us to have. Uh, expanded events and community gatherings, so. Yeah, it's really good and the comments have been good. Okay, I'm at goal three and I'm ahead of schedule, so we're doing good. All right, create an environment to attract and retain and grow businesses. So this is something the council wanted to do. Now remember when we came up with this goal at the time. Growth wasn't really occurring, we were just coming out of. A recessionary period. And so we've done a lot, we focused, we uh, updated our development ordinance. We've uh, in that ordinance, we've created some streamlined processes for businesses to be able to relocate in the existing buildings. As long as they met all the code criteria and the zoning criteria. Um. We've had ribbon cuttings, we did a ribbon cutting with G three, we did a ribbon cutting with the new Ace Hardware. Um. Uh, our grand opening at MODS and MODS in itself is just a great business incubator for the Saturday market in the summertime. Um, and we, we've got plans, so we're building that. It's gonna take a little bit of time, but we're. We're, we're, our, our plan is to continue to build that. Saturday market, Porter Boone, we've been enhancing that. Newsletter advertising, it's very low cost for folks to advertise in our newsletter. Uh, local businesses, they can advertise for. I, I don't know if there's a place that even compares. I mean. If you look at what some of the other advertisement agencies. Would charge for a publication like that, we're, we're really low, so that's good. We do a business directory. And then community events, I mentioned superhero carnival. If you've got a business in town. For, if you wanna spend a few hours that day and, and come down, we supply the game, you supply some toys, so you know, a hundred dollars, you could have. Toys for the kids to give out and, and we supply everything else. And uh, it doesn't cost them anything but the toys that they give to the kids, they get to advertise their business, you know, it's a really good value for. Businesses uh, in the community that wanna participate. And uh, corn festival, party in the park, you know, those are, those are all events uh, that where people can come and have a booth. Uh, they can try some products out with the community, they can earn some money. Uh, they can advertise their business, whatever their goal is, they really, the opportunity is there. Christmas in the park is the same way. We get a lot of businesses that will. Sponsor something, an element of it, and then they'll come with, put a banner uh, and talk about that, so. Lot of good opportu- opportunities there. We don't have a functioning. Chamber within the city, there's the state and sublimity chamber and they do have. Uh, members from our community, but we kind of provide some of that opportunity that you might see provided by a chamber. And there's just some pictures, that was grand opening of MODS, I'm very proud of that project. Uh, ribbon cutting. G three. Go for it, goal four, ensure a safe and prepared environment. Uh, we, we've never really stopped working on public safety in this community. It's really just an ongoing. Uh, process for us. Uh, we have additional public safety projects and programs, some of those were put on. Uh, paused during COVID, right? And we're just now getting back around. To being able to re-implement those. An example of that is our emergency, internal emergency planning group. Which is a group made up of staff and uh, fire district school board members that get together, we, we talk about disaster planning. And um, response in the community. So we're just now getting that put back together. Um, we did implement body worn cameras in the city, uh, citywide. We, we had some previously, but they were old and. Didn't work and didn't work. Now we're actually connected to a system where the body cameras are on, they're recording all the time. So if they're, if they're on person, they're recording. And um, you know, that's just these days with everything that happens, it just is a great transparency tool for the community. Um, if an incident occurs, we can see what actually transpired. And so that's great. Um. Patrol vehicles, we've been trying to keep our fleet up, updated. Um, we put some video surveillance in Wildwood Park, uh, we didn't have it out there. Uh, and we're looking at a system citywide, we're kind of trying to find grants that we can. Get that might help us with that. Um, we just, we just have a lot of vandalism and if people know in those public spaces, they're being recorded, it deters that a little bit. Um, and if there is an incident, then we can address it right away. Uh, we have to do our hazard mitigation plan, that's a FEMA requirement. We do a joint plan with Marion County Emergency Management. Um, and then we have to update that each year. Uh, we have to report that out to the community, we do that in our newsletter. Uh, some of the things that we're doing and then we, we have to do mitigation. Um, preventative measures, so you know, we tell folks to. You know, plan for this or plan for that, uh, as part of that mitigation plan. There are some projects associated with that and we have looked at trying to get some. Federal funding for those projects, um, so we continue to work on that. Safety manuals, we continue to do that regularly. We have a internal safety committee. Uh, that meet regularly and then, uh, as you can see, we've updated a number of uh, required. Uh, policies in the city that were mandated uh, through different actions that have occurred. Um. Public safety, uh, uh, we do the pedestrian crosswalk events a few times a year, uh, you know? If you've been across Main Street here, uh, people don't always stop. And, and sometimes they don't even slow down. Uh, so we try to do those a couple of times a year. We notice it, uh, you know, we put signs out before the event, a couple of days before the event, we let people know there's gonna be an enforcement. Uh, but we still, every time, you know, there's still quite a few folks that violate that. Um. The elementary school has a carnival, I think it was on pause the last couple of years, but they started it again this year. And we've always participated in that. National Night Out. Another event just to make folks aware of their surroundings. Uh, bring community members together in neighborhoods to do crime watches or just to be aware that, you know, they can watch out for each other. The bike to school uh, parade, I think that was on pause too until this year, right? And uh, it was a huge success. What did we have? Three hundred kids and a hundred parents or something like that? Yeah, it was crazy, three or four, five hundred participants for that little bike parade. And uh, just uh, you know, our community, when we, when we do these programs and these events, the response. Is very good, we have lots of participation, so that tells you that they're worthy programs. Um. Uh, as you know, our, uh, we had to appoint a new chief this year and uh, Chief Flowers was appointed. Uh, he went through his probationary period and uh, last week I signed. Uh, a, a little thing, a statement for um, his file that said, you know, you finished your probationary period and. And you know, you're now in that position. Uh, and then we did a promote within Sergeant Officer Bird to our sergeant position. And you know, our department's a little thin right now because we're still down a couple of officers and there's always movement. In the police department, there's always officers coming and officers going, that's just the nature of small community departments and uh, they've been uh, Damian. Uh, Chief Flowers and uh, Sergeant Erd have been working really well. Together and they've really uh, held the department together, so I gotta give them props. Um. So done a good job. And then our mutual aid agreements, you know, we have these mutual aid agreements and one of the challenges that we've had. Over the years is because we have a department that's staffed. All the time, we end up getting called out to neighboring communities a lot. And um, and sometimes I feel like we're just basically providing services for some of these communities, but. This year we've implemented some protocols and those numbers have dramatically decreased. So if you had looked at reports from year before last or last year, you would have seen forty, forty-five percent of our call volume was responding to other. Neighborhoods, now that's down to five to ten percent if you look at the reports, it's uh, it's, it's pretty low. And, and that's because the protocols that we've set is we're gonna respond to life safety calls. Uh, but we're not gonna come out because a cat stuck in a tree or. You know, whatever the, whatever the other call might be, I don't know what they are. So um, so we, and, and that was really all about being in the community. You know, uh, as much as possible. Um, these are our, our dispatch uh, reports, uh, and, and so you can kind of see. Our police call volumes, twenty-two, we, actually the call went down, so our dispatch calls went down a little bit. Um, so that's, it was not bad, that's good, yeah. Um, and it looks like that trend, Umsville fires went down a little bit too, so that's good. Um. We're gonna read those, uh. And so we're working on things, uh, we've been working on, you know, what are some programs that we could put in? Uh, to have a lasting effect on sustainability for our staffing plans. Uh, we're working on those, we're. Talking about different ideas, anything for maybe a ranger or cadet program to get some kids in. And exposed to the police department early. Uh, and you know, by doing that, yes, we invest a little bit of time i- into those folks, but. Um, by doing that, hopefully that, those will be. Um, good candidates that would come back and apply for jobs. Right? And be part of the community and that's what we want. We want somebody to feel like they're part of the community when they're part of our police department. And so, um, yeah, we'll continue to do that, we'll look for those ways. Uh, and then this is just some of our, our good pictures. Uh, just out dealing with the kids and the community, community policing is really big, uh, it's really important. For small communities where you're integrated in the community, you get to know the kids early on. And that really goes a long way to prevention of, you know, crimes in the future. Uh, and so. You get to know everybody. You know, you get to know who's making good decisions and who's not making good decisions, you know their parents. We don't want our first interaction with a parent to be something that's crime related. Um, you know, we'd rather. Our first interaction be community events and, and then we can go and speak to the parents. Um, or other. Or just the, the individuals themselves. And talk to them about continuing to make good decisions, you know, being part of the community, so. It's all part of community policing. There's our bike to school, I mean, you can see that just a crazy amount of kids participate in that. And then goal five, uh, provide services that are responsive to citizens and demonstrate good. Stewardship. Honestly, a lot of our goals, a lot of our accomplishments transfer. Back and forth because a lot of our goals serve multiple purposes, right? Uh, some of them have an economic development. Element to it, but it also may have a community communication. An outreach uh, element to it, but uh, I think updating our development codes, if folks can read. The development code in plain English and say. This is what I would have to do. If they can do that, that's business friendly. If it's a moving target and they're really not sure what they're gonna have to do. Then it's, it's difficult for them to decide if they want to invest, make that capital investment or not. So we wanna clearly articulate what's the community's expectation for development. Uh, and then when people come in, make sure that they're accountable to meet that expectation, so that's, that's what we're trying to do with the development code. Um. We implemented the low income housing water assistance program, that was a statewide uh, program, but um, you know, it's used in our community. And basically that's a fund that's set up, you get pre-qualified. And if you need assistance with a utility bill and you meet the criteria, they, they help. And the way that's set up with us is, is we don't have to get the money today. If you're assigned on the program, we'll build the assistance program. So, um, we have folks that we have resources. That we send folks to if they struggle with their utility bills. Uh, and there's a number of them and they range anywhere from just good Samaritans in the community that'll provide some help to individuals, to local faith groups. Uh, and churches, to organizations that actually provide. That benefit and the idea is to help people. You know, to give them a leg up, not to pay. Uh, an ongoing expense, but to help them through a difficult time. Uh, we did sign our cas- sign our casel. Contracts and they're working on that and, um, you know, that, that software will really help city staff be able to provide. Um. Information in a much more organized fashion so that we can provide that information back when we get inquiries to the community. Um. It's just much more user friendly for staff. To be able to provide some of those and there's some other things we'll talk about, we're gonna propose as part of our retreat discussion. Where we think we can provide a lot more customer service in some of our operations. Our watch fire sign, that's the sign right out here that we got uh, implemented this year, a great communication tool. Right? I mean, people can see it. Now that doubles as like an emergency management or emergency response. Uh, type of. Uh, device as well. If the power goes out, it's uh, wired into this building, which is generated. And so if, you know, people don't have power to where they can. Get messages or they don't have internet and they drive through the community, they'll be able to see. Those, those messages, um, and so it's a good way for us to communicate. During events with the community and it might say warming shelter here. Or it might say, you know, if you're struggling, call this number, whatever. Whatever those things, whatever those resources are that we can make available. Um, our veterans, uh, and service memorial out front, that was a great project that we put together. Council got to direct that project and tell us what they wanted to see and that was, that's so, been so well received by the community and visitors. I mean, we have. We have people that just come and take pictures with the statues. And they'll be out there for fifteen, twenty minutes taking pictures and then they leave. And uh, they just love that memorial and I think it makes a statement. When somebody's coming to city hall immediately about our community and, and what values we have, I really do. So, uh, great project. Um, community center updates, we're still waiting for a little nicer weather, actually, uh, it might snow tonight, I heard. So uh, tonight and tomorrow morning, so we've been trying to get over that unexpected weather to get the brick facade put on the front, that's the last thing. I think we have to do uh, for the, for the community center project. Um, and then IT work, we've had to do a number of things, so one of the, one of the big issues that we've had is making sure we were C just for. Uh, compliant. And we haven't really been CGS compliant for many years. So over the last couple of years, we've been implementing policies and procedures and different pieces of uh, equipment to lock down our. Facilities and. The flow of information to make sure that we're compliant. Uh, there's supposed to be CGS audits happening and we wanna make sure that we get a, a good audit review when, when they come through. Uh, we just put in new servers again. Now, some of you that have been on the council knows, we struggled just a few years ago. Uh, because we needed new servers and our servers were dying and we didn't know when they were gonna die. We didn't know if today would be the day that the system would go down. And in fact, when we were finally were able to get servers, we were able to get a grant through USDA. And we upgraded our servers. Uh, the day that our new server went online, our old servers died. And they're dead. And, and so we don't wanna get to that point again, so we implemented in our budget. A sustainable plan where we would go through and update those servers. Uh, every few years. Now what we've been doing is we haven't been taking the old servers offline. We've updated new servers and now we're using the old servers as a redundant backup system. Uh, and so we're utilizing that, but you didn't even really, I mean, it was just pre-programmed, pre-budgeted, we didn't have a crisis because we planned for it. And um, and really that's the type of planning that we need to do and continue to do in the future. But just a few years ago, we were in crisis mode for a similar thing and. Um, I just think the city's done a really, really good job. Uh, looking at all of that landscape of issues and challenges and saying, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna. We're gonna plan ourselves to a better future, right? We're gonna put these programs in place. And everything should not be a crisis, some of it should be normal business. So we've done a good job there. And there's our sign. Is it animated? It is animated. Yeah. And it's, it's a little slow because we're doing this over wifi. That's maybe one of the reasons the video didn't work too. But, you know, just great community messages. We put the weather and the temperature and stuff on there. But really any messages that we have for the community, we can put on there. As time goes on, we may look for other programs to associate with this, but right now it's just really good to advertise events, community meetings, happenings around town. And social media is one platform. This is one platform. Surveys are another platform. Our website's another platform. We just continue to use all the various platforms that are out there. And there's our, our memorial. That project really came together. It was a very easy project. It was funded about eighty-five percent through a state grant. And then we actually had a couple, a local service providers, I think Pacific Power Corp. Provided five thousand dollars for the project. Actually, it cost the city very little for this project at the end of the day, except for our time to put all the elements together and get it installed. But a great project. You know, we, we have one of the, one of the goals that we've had, and one of the things we've been trying to do was to, to implement art in the community. We saw art on the water tower that'll be part of that future project. And again, that's, that's one of those things. We got stalled because of COVID, but we're kind of back in. I'd love to see more of this type of stuff throughout the community, whether it's a statue or some other form. And we do have funds that we're building for, for that, that are dedicated for art projects throughout the community. So great project. So these are projects that are in process. The Delmar West intersection, the design's complete. I had them do an alternative design one. That's just, it's, it's just a alternative. If we run into problems with some of the encroachment issues, the project could still move forward. I was recently informed that, and I think Della may talk about this in her report tonight, that we're gonna, we're, we're pulled, we're being pulled into the Metropolitan Planning District. And so some of the requirements on the city are going to change. Now, I didn't have a pre-notice of that 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 was going to occur. And I don't know exactly what the parameters like, when it will happen, if it's a date in the future, if it's already occurred. But that means we'll be part of SCATS, which is that Salem area Kaiser group. And what that means is, is there may be some money available that are federal dollars that come in through that organization. But it also means that we're going to have to, we're going to have to build our infrastructure to the federal standard, which is a much higher standard. And, and so I'm not really sure if that will affect this project or not, but we'll have to look at that. But anyway, that's, that's, that's just about off the rolls. The new shop, again, I talked to you, that's out to bid. I think late February, early March, we'll come back with recommendations on awarding that. And then, you know, the project's gonna, we'll go through a mobilization contract and we'll get that project started. The reservoirs and wells, you know, those are multi-year projects right there, but we're making, we're making a lot of progress on, on those. We're actually moving at lightning speed on that project. And then the wastewater facility, again, I don't think a day goes by that we don't talk about this wastewater facility project. And we're writing memos and letters and we're working on the white page back to a representative that was a deliverable. We promised them today and, and we'll get that out. So. And then I just wanted to impress on the community, you know, sometimes projects are multi-years and you can't read this. You, you know, nobody can read this, but this list is a very valid list. And I always try to include it in the end of my State of the Cities because there's a lot of milestone projects in here. The Safe Routes to School Project, purchasing the twenty-three acre park. You know, buying new cars for the police department. Making our budget sustainable, you know, it was just a few years ago, all of our funds were in the red. You know, they were, they were all going to be in bad shape. And we changed our policies and changed that around. These, there, there's a lot of huge milestone projects in here for the city to be very proud of over the last few years. And I'm, I'm pretty pleased that, you know, this, the city is moving forward and, and we are, we are being accountable, we are being good stewards to the community. And this list is just a representation of that. And so I think we've done a lot of positive stuff. So I like to say our state of the community is vibrant and progressive, and I think there's a positive outlook for us. We still face challenges, but remember in city government, we never reach the goal line. It's just a different challenge, right? That's our job. And, and so it's easy to just keep doing these projects and to move on to the next project. But I'm really proud of what we've accomplished, what our team's accomplished. I think we got a stellar staff right now. I'm, I'm, I'm just overly enjoyed with the folks that are working for the city right now. And they've got a lot of, got a, got a lot of good stuff ahead of us. So I'm happy to answer any questions. Council has any? An hour, that's a record for me.
I think the first State of the City was like two and a half hours, the first one they sat on.
But we covered a lot of areas.
Questions, can we bring them to the retreat?
Questions? You can bring them, you can ask them now, you can bring them to City Hall, or you can bring them to the retreat, either one?
No, just a couple of things like C just, I have no idea what that is.
That is the, the Criminal Justice Information System. And so if you have a police, police or courts department, they have to have access to criminal records. And there's a lot of requirements when you have access to that of how you secure that information because not anybody can access somebody's criminal history. And so all of our staff at City Hall are, are certified. C just, we're, we're C just certified, I guess would be the way that they phrase it, which means we go through a training because even though most of us have no way of getting in any of the criminal records, if we were to come across them somehow, we have to know that they need to be secured and how they're secured. Because we're in the same building as the police department, even our admin staff have to be C just certified. Anybody that has access to the police department has to be C just certified. So, you know, if somebody's going in there unescorted, even a maintenance person. Because they have to be trained in, you know, how to address sensitive material if they see it. And so there's only a couple of individuals that really have that know how to get into the database and have passwords and things like that. But just because we're all in the building, we have to be able to. And that, that's just very sensitive information and they only need it for their purpose. You know, there's no reason why any of us would need any of that. But C just, they, they come in and they do an audit. And they see, do you have policies in place that are compliant with how these records should be handled and treated? Okay, any other questions? Excellent.
Ron?
So no more new business, but we have your report, city administrator report.
And because I know I was waiting for an extensive period of time. I purposely kept my report short for you tonight. So I'll just go through a couple of things just for the community's benefit. We have our first collective bargaining agreement with our union on Wednesday. That'll be our first meeting. I'm kind of happy to get it going and, and take that to its conclusion. We participated last week on February ninth with the Cascade High School Job Fair. I was, Kirsty put together the booth or Haley put together the booth and, and I think Kirsty helped with some of the materials. But we had our police department, we had Public Works. Haley from Admin was there and we had good participation, right? I think our booth was like one of the busiest.
Yeah, the police department has the drunk goggles.
Yeah, and the high school kids really liked putting on the drunk goggles. But, you know, it's just a positive. It was a little bit of an investment in time, but again, it was a positive interaction for the city and the police department to interact with the high school kids. Maybe we impressed upon them how, you know, interesting government work is. But again, it's about that, that community policing and community interaction. Those kids will know who our Public Works Director, they know somebody at City Hall. It's, it was just a good thing for us to do and very well received. Our event planning committee had our first meeting of the year. We're gearing up for all our events this year. And post-COVID, we had a, a lot of events that we had planned pre-COVID that got canceled. And so we're starting to regroup with those events. So we do plan on doing our volunteer appreciation dinner. And I think we're going to do it in April. And actually, I think we're going to work in partnership with the Fire District to do it over at the hall because we may have so many volunteers, they won't fit in the community center. So we're working on that. Reminder, our retreat is March eighteenth. And then there's year-to-date financials on your desk. I always give those to you in January, February. And we're looking really good. We budget very conservatively, so our revenues look really good coming in for the year. And you'll see some milestone or some performance measures in there where I think we're supposed to be at fifty-eight percent right now based on that report. And you'll see some of our revenues are in the eighty percent range. So we're doing really good on revenues. And you'll see some expenditure line items that are over, but a lot of those are tied to special purchases or subscriptions or insurance payments that have to be made upfront the first of the year. So if you have any questions, you're welcome to ask me about that. And then I just want to introduce our newest member. She's here tonight, Tracy Nichols. Tracy, can you just say hi there? Tracy, today was her first day, so we kind of just threw her in and said, you're coming to a council meeting. But she has taken over for Colleen as our city clerk. And I'm just excited to have her. Yeah. Great addition. Thank you.
Welcome.
That's all I have, unless you have questions. Okay.
Well, then we're moving on to mayor and counselor reports.
I do. At my Mid Valley Area Transportation Commission meeting, I was notified that we're joining the MPO that Ron mentioned. And that does require us to coordinate between Salem and Turner and Umsville. Kaiser, I'm not sure if they have any on the other side in Polk County or not. Because I've never been involved with it before. But it will be voted on in their February meeting later this month. And then we will get the formal invitation to have someone join. So usually that would be the mayor, someone on the committee already for the transportation or our city administrator. They will send us the requirements for that and then we'll have to select who that's going to be. They do meet during the day and it's a couple hour long meeting monthly. So other than that, we're in the process through the Transportation Committee meeting and getting all the details in the next couple of months of where the state's proposing to put money for ODOT and projects coming up. And so we'll be doing a bunch of that. I will mention when we were at the legislative days last month, I met the gal who approved our veterans memorial and she was asking me about it and they're very excited to hear how popular it is with our community. And they look forward to future grant opportunities with us.
I myself have been continuing to reach out to make lobby appointments with our wastewater system and reaching out to the community with the schools and other organizations. Basically, if an organization has an impact within our community, I've reached out to do meet and greets. I have appointments scheduled all the way out through April. But if there is some some organization that you guys want me to meet and talk with, or let me know. If you guys want to come with me, let me know. I do have a couple lobby appointments set up. They're right in the middle of the day. I've been trying to do them on my lunch. So I think I have two scheduled out next month. So. Anybody else? Then moving on to Good to the Order. Anything for Good to the Order? Correspondence? That we can adjourn the meeting at what time is it? Eight twenty-eight PM.